Hello, everyone. I'm Mark Cobrick and this is the Arvada City Council Candidate Forum. Welcome to our broadcast. The goal of the forum is to present the views of the candidates for our Vada City Council in a fair, nonpartisan setting so that you, the voters, can make an informed decision. All candidates whose names will appear on the ballot have been invited to participate in this forum. The League of Women Voters of Jefferson County is sponsoring our forum. The views expressed here will be those of the candidates, not the views of the Jefferson County League of Women Voters. The Jeffco League of Women Voters has provided all of the questions for the candidates in this broadcast. The League takes no stand in support of or in opposition to the candidates. Each candidate is going to have two minutes for an opening statement to tell us about themselves and discuss why they have chosen to be on the Arvada City Council. The candidates will also have one minute for closing comments, and I will ask as many questions as time permits, and each candidate will have the chance to respond to each question with a two-minute limit per response. And they'll take turns answering first. If a candidate is called into question on any issue, a 45-second rebuttal will be offered prior to the closing statement. So, in the 2021 election, council positions for District One, District Three, and the council member at large are being filled. The candidates for the council member at large position are Michael P. Griffith and Lisa Smith. Welcome to both of you tonight. Curiously, they live across the street from each other. How that happens, I don't know. There you are. So, opening statements are first, and Michael, you will go first. You have two minutes.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters. I'd like to thank the attendees and the moderator. I'd also like to thank my wife, Abigail, who's at home with our toddler, Claire Marie, and our new baby, Declan Swift, and our two dogs. And finally, I'd like to thank all the candidates that you'll hear from today. Make no mistake, anybody speaking this afternoon cares deeply about the city. I'd like to introduce myself as a resident of Arvada. I moved to Arvada with my wife seven years ago, and in that time, we purchased a historic home. We've rebuilt it ourselves. We've gotten married, and we've had two children. This city means a lot to me. I am deeply invested in the community and the strength of the city. I am a professional in the urban design industry with 12 years of experience, and I've personally overseen the construction and management of over a billion dollars of projects throughout the Front Range. These are projects like South Sloane's Lake and the 16th Street Mall, where we're going to break ground later this year. South Sloane's Lake has 850 units and 20% affordable housing. Over the last five years, I've been on the Arvada Planning Commission, where I've now sit as the vice chair, and I've overseen dozens of redevelopments and new projects that shape our city. It was very clear to me when I first joined the Planning Commission that one day I would run for city council. And I firmly believe that there should be a design voice on city council to help guide growth and development in the future. The choices and decisions that we make over the next four years will greatly impact the quality of life over the next 40. I'm Mike Griffith, and I'd love to have your vote. If you'd like to learn more about me, my website is MichaelForArvada.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you very much. And now, Lisa, if you will, your opening statement. You also have two minutes.
Wonderful. Well, thank you all for hosting us today. I really appreciate everything you do in educating the community and engaging our voters. My name is Lisa Smith, and I'm running for Arvada City Council at large. I'm a former military policewoman turned social worker. I come from a family of public servants. My dad is a social worker, and my mom is an immigrant from Argentina who became a public school teacher. They taught me three values to live by: work hard, serve others, and speak up. Throughout my career, I've served older adult and disabled Coloradans in finding resources and healthcare services. I piloted programs around housing and homelessness, and I've supported our veterans as a transition counselor. I believe we need voices at the table that have served on the ground and understand what communities and programs work. Today, my profession consists of two main things: supporting housing initiatives and helping communities recover from disasters. If there's one thing we learned in this past year is that disasters do not discriminate. Any one of us can lose our jobs. Any one of us can have to care for an elderly parent. That is why I will prioritize equitable housing solutions. I love Arvada's social and supportive programs, like Co-Responding and our Housing Navigator programs, and I'll continue to promote and elevate these. Lastly, having spent many years on the front lines of disaster-stricken communities, I will fight to promote equitable and environmentally sustainable policies. I firmly believe that my diverse background and experience in helping communities in the good and the bad days is what we need to continue to move Arvada forward together. Thank you so much, and I look forward to your questions.
All right, Lisa, thank you very much. We'll move on to questions now, and you each, once again, will be given two minutes to respond to each question, and both of you will be given the opportunity, of course, to respond. And Lisa, you will go first. First question is, if elected to the Arvada City Council, what recommendations, if any, would you want to see enacted to address the problem of homelessness in the city of Arvada?
Awesome. Thank you so much for that question. I appreciate it. Having worked with at-risk and homeless individuals for years, it's been by far the most humbling experience, aside from working in a refugee camp. The majority of homeless people have significant issues around trauma, mental health, and substance abuse, and I think it's worth acknowledging that first before we take a step of action any further. We need, by simply putting someone in a home, that is not going to solve homelessness. We need to have wraparound case management services in order to stabilize them in the home. I think simply putting someone in a house is not going to be the solution. We need a dual approach, and that is what I want to use as a social worker in that background. I worked in the Boston Mayor's Office around housing innovation and policy, and a lot of my work was looking at creative strategies to solve affordable housing and homelessness. I will use that experience, data, and ground level work to bring those solutions to the table. Additionally, the city's already working towards a wraparound model in this community, and I'd like to see that be elevated and talked about a little bit more. And I'd like to leverage some of our existing partnerships already in the community, both nonprofit and faith-based communities. Additionally, we need to focus on getting people out of renting and into homeownership. If we're able to take people out of rental units and into homeownership, that frees up some of the housing stock that we can then use for homeless and at-risk families. So, I'd like to see kind of a more flow, continuous flow of housing services and programs to tackle the housing issue. Thank you.
All right, Lisa, thank you very much. Michael, question two. I'll repeat the question. If elected to the Arvada City Council, what recommendations, if any, would you want to see enacted to address the problem of homelessness in the city of Arvada?
Thank you. Good question. Yeah, so this is a question that's being asked all over the country, frankly. It's more than a local issue. It's very much a regional issue. If we had some sort of magic bullet for homelessness in Arvada, it wouldn't solve it long term because it would just be a turnover elsewhere in the Front Range or elsewhere in the country. So, we have to first acknowledge and understand that when we see issues with homelessness, we see encampments, we see activity that concerns us. That doesn't mean that the city isn't doing anything, and that doesn't mean that there aren't leaders actively engaged in conversations about how to solve this issue. It's very complex. So, I would first say that we need to understand that there's a lot going on in the background. The other thing that I would say is that this is the perfect case for us to talk about trade-offs and building consensus and being clear and communicating to community members and citizens. So, essentially, what we have to do is we have to think, okay, what do we do to ensure that our neighborhoods, our cities, and our downtowns remain vibrant and safe, and at the same time, address the needs of real people that are out there having to deal with some issues that are quite challenging? So, I would propose a trade-off. The trade-off being that we enforce the clearing of the right-of-way and the administration of safety, and at the same time, we provide access to wraparound services to organizations that are really purpose-built to help people experiencing homelessness. So, we're talking about religious organizations, volunteer networks, and groups like this. And then, the final thing is, once we understand that trade-off, we have to express it clearly to the community. Because if the community doesn't see that that's what we're intending to do, or that that's the plan, they assume that we don't have one. So, the first piece is really transparency. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Michael. And now, the second question, and Michael, you will answer first, as our format requires. The police department has a responsibility for protecting the public in a variety of situations. When carrying out duties as police officers, what changes, if any, would you recommend the city of Arvada and the police department make to protect the community as well as protect the police?
It's a very timely question, given the events that we've gone through as a city over the last several months. You know, I think one of the things that's really important that's happening with our Arvada Police Department, that actually was in place well before the events of the pandemic and everything we've seen over the last 18 months, was the co-responder program. And I think that this is something that really has been championed by the police department and social policymakers alike. So, I think co-responders are absolutely critical, and I think that it's important to understand that there's a difference between a police call that requires a co-responder, or that could be using a co-responder, and a police call that actually is a threat that requires a police officer. I think the training that we receive, that our officers receive in Arvada is exceptional, and it's been noted time and time again that in the Front Range, our police officers are incredibly well-trained and well-vetted. It takes upwards of a year to onboard one new recruit to our police department. So, the amount of training they go through is absolutely extraordinary. They're also required to have a four-year degree, which is quite incredible. I think there's only one other city in the Front Range that requires something so rigorous. So, I think we do a lot of what we're doing now, and I think we continue to set the example with the Arvada Police Department for other cities in the Front Range and, quite frankly, around the country. I think we're doing it right. Thank you.
All right, Michael, thank you. Lisa, same question for you. I'll repeat it for you. You also will have two minutes. The police department has a responsibility for protecting the public in a variety of situations. When carrying out duties as police officers, what changes, if any, would you recommend that the city of Arvada and the police department make to protect the community as well as protect the police?
Well, thank you. If I'm elected, I believe I would be the only person on council that actually has a policing background as well as social work. And I am very proud of that, and I look forward to bringing that perspective to the table. One of the things that we noticed is that there's been a significant drop in policing, the staffing levels of the police enforcement units right now, mainly because a lot of the national narrative is turning people away. A lot of the community is distrusting of the community of police officers. So, what I would like to look at is how we can engage the police officers within the community in a different way, other than just having them respond. A lot of community, maybe sector-based meetings, engagement, and being able to communicate and talk to the neighborhood, the residents, in a more efficient way. I think sometimes we don't know what goes on in the police department. As a former police officer, I remember the type of training that we got was very heavy on just eliminating the threat, making sure it stopped. Maybe we need to look about how we're training to de-escalate and be a little more smart in how we respond. As Michael touched on, that co-responder model is huge. Being able to have social workers that know the background of mental health and substance abuse and trauma and bringing that to the response table will be fundamental in changing the way we go. The problem is trying to get social workers to fill those seats. It is hard to be a police officer, and it is hard to be a social worker in those settings. So, I believe our community partnerships in that co-response model is what we need to do. And second, by transparency and community engagement to help with the crime and the police. Thank you.
All right, Lisa, thank you. Our next question, and Lisa, you will answer first this time. With the passage of Senate Bill 21-256, which gives local jurisdictions more latitude to set their own gun control regulations, what changes would you support to your city's weapons ordinance regarding gun control regulations?
That's a touchy subject. I probably fielded about five questions from voters today just on that question alone. Look, as a military police officer, I have used and carried the gamut of weapons, you know, from grenade launchers to machine guns to 50 caliber. They are not a toy. I really believe that we could increase our safety and training programs. A lot of times, you can just walk into a facility, into a gun shop, and purchase any sort of gun, and that is something we really need to look at. And just not saying to take it away or do anything like that, but we really need to explore how we're providing safety and training courses within the community. I would support the city of Arvada working on offering those training and services and programs to ensure that we have safer gun laws. Right now, we're gun owners. My husband's a hunter, and we are safe about it. We have a safe. We have it, you know, separated, and I think it's important for people to understand that. So, right now, I would look at what the policies are and see if there's any concern if needing to change it, but right now, it seems to be okay and where it's at.
All right. Thank you. Michael, same question for you. With the passage of Senate Bill 21-256, which gives local jurisdictions more latitude to set their own gun control regulations, what changes would you support to your city's weapons ordinance regarding gun control regulations? And you also have two minutes.
I would do absolutely nothing. This is an inappropriate use of local jurisdiction, and I think that it's an interesting experiment to give communities their ability to make their own gun laws. I think it's interesting that they're only allowed to make them more restrictive and not less, and I don't think that this is within the scope of local government. I think we would end up with a patchwork of laws that would be hard to follow and overly onerous for citizens. So, I would do absolutely nothing, and I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. The last question. Michael, you will answer first. What are your priorities for spending available American Rescue Plan Act federal dollars and the proposed infrastructure funds? What are your priorities for spending those monies? And again, you have two minutes.
Oh, this is a good question. So, I'm actually dealing with this a lot in my professional life. So, as an infrastructure expert and a placemaking expert, I spend a lot of time thinking about how we're going to fund these projects that our cities need. So, public space, roadway infrastructure, and a number of other things that cities pay for, we need to get more out of those investments. And when I say that, I'm saying that we need a dollar to be spent on the roadway should yield a dollar in amenity benefit. So, open space and parks and roadways can actually operate in the same space. And so, if we have the opportunity to get additional stimulus money to rebuild our roads, our drainage infrastructure, parks, and open space networks, we need to make sure we're being smart about that. And I think the first step would be to take a look at the city has collected this massive document of all of the roadway projects that are really kind of prioritized over the next several years to meet our growing capacity demands. And there's $200 million of projects identified in there. So, I would look closely at that list. Those projects actually, in there included 3F and the Ralston Road improvements that were bonded out a few years ago. I would look and see if I could find a couple more bonding opportunities there, and then, the ones that I couldn't bond, I'd try and see if we could get some of that federal stimulus money to go ahead and pump that into our development as well. Thank you.
Michael, thank you. Lisa, same question. What are your priorities for spending available American Rescue Plan federal dollars and the proposed infrastructure funds? Your priorities for spending?
Well, I wish that this question happened every year so we had extra spending, but we don't. So, one of the things I already touched on is housing, right? I really believe that if we're able to do wraparound services, case management services, increasing our partnerships, we'll be able to help with the housing challenge. But since I've already talked about that, I'll talk a little bit about transportation. Today, I had a conversation with a lady in a wheelchair. She told me that she has to get on 64th and ride her power wheelchair in traffic to get to the grocery store. Last week, I had a conversation with another disabled individual who told me that the bike path to Costco just stopped, so he couldn't go any further. I live two blocks from an elementary school, and I have no sidewalks. I've watched pregnant women with their stroller and their kids and their dogs stand in my driveway as they watch other dogs and people and cars go flying by, and we need to prioritize our multimodal transportation system. We have 25 miles of missing sidewalks. That's not acceptable for people that want to get around without a car. We have incomplete bike paths that we really need to focus on to ensure people aren't just riding bikes for fun, but are able to get to their errands, are able to get to their schools. Things like bike trains where you could ride, and that's something that we talked about, that Officer Beasley's story had, where he brought people to the school together and rode bikes. We could really leverage that, especially north and south. We don't have enough trails north and south. I'd really leverage our multimodal transportation. And additionally, we have over $80 million of ADA compliant requirements that we need to work on, and we have to start somewhere, and that is where I would focus a lot of that money.
All right, Lisa, thank you. Time now for closing statements. Each of you will have one minute for your closing statement, and the League of Women Voters is posing the question, why should the citizens of Arvada vote for you? Again, you will have one minute, and Lisa, you will speak first. Your closing statement, if you would.
All right. Well, thank you again for hosting us. I really appreciate it. It is clear that people in Arvada come from all walks of life and have so many different concerns with the city. We need different experiences and perspectives on council, especially leaders that understand the challenges around housing and safety and what it takes to solve them. I will bring a diverse voice to council: a veteran, a female, a social worker, a first-generation American. If you elect me, you won't be just electing a service-driven leader. You'll be electing an advocate, someone that will listen to your needs and will understand and work hard for this community. I hope to have your vote in November or in a couple weeks when ballots drop, but if I don't yet, please reach out at LisaForArvada.com, and we'll continue this conversation. I want to be here for all of you, so please reach out. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa, Michael, your closing statement, if you would. Why should the citizens of Arvada vote for you?
Thank you very much, and thank you, League of Women Voters, for having us. So, for me, you know, this has been a message that I've been sharing with folks quite a lot lately, and it's shocking that the city council here in Arvada has never had anybody with engineering, architecture, or urban design experience right here making decisions for the community. And I know that we've grown at an incredible pace over the last 10 years, and people are really feeling that development fatigue. They're feeling the capacity, roadway issues. It's taken them longer to get everywhere they're trying to go, to and from work, dropping off the kids. And I think that if we had the opportunity that we have right now to put somebody on city council with the unique and very diverse background of design, engineering, and placemaking with a focus on people, I think that would change the outcomes of the future, and the next 40 years would be much brighter than they would be without that voice. So, I'm Michael Griffith. I'd love to earn your vote. Please visit my website, MichaelForArvada.com. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Thanks to both of our candidates, Michael P. Griffith and Lisa Smith. Thanks to both of you for running, for being respectful of our time tonight, and thank you for your answers. Thank you both.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. We now move to Arvada City Council District One candidates in our forum. Let's meet the candidates for District One. Chelsea Kanda on my right, and Randy Mormon on my left. You're right. So, please introduce yourselves, and we want to know why you want to be a member of the Arvada City Council. You will each have two minutes for your opening statements. And Chelsea, you have the opportunity to go first. Two minutes, if you please.
Thank you. Thank you so much for hosting us here this evening. My name is Chelsea, and I am an engaged citizen, and I've recently become concerned with the direction that Arvada looks to be headed. I've been here in Arvada for eight years, although I'm originally from Littleton, Colorado. I have spent 11 years teaching high school English, and the last seven of those years, I've also served as a gifted and talented coordinator at the charter school where I worked. My husband and I have four active kids, and we own a small business in Arvada. And I left the classroom at the end of last year, and now I work with him trying to grow his business and keep him straight. So, I'm running for city council because I love Arvada. I love the small-town feel where you connect with fellow neighbors across varying circles. You never know when you're going to run into somebody at the grocery store. We use every inch of this beautiful city, and I want to preserve it as a safe suburban community. My priorities on city council will be public safety, infrastructure, and responsible growth.
All right, Chelsea, thank you very much. Now, Randy, if you would, your opening statement, two minutes also.
Great. Thank you. Good evening, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum, and thank you all for being here and watching. My name is Randy Mormon, and I am a candidate for District One, and I'm running for a very personal reason. When my husband and I moved here 10 years ago, we did not know very many people in Arvada, and we started fostering with Jefferson County Foster Care. And it was our neighbors who showed up at our door and gave us clothes and food and offered to babysit. And then, four years ago, my husband Scott had a stroke, and again, our neighbor showed up and gave us the support and offered to help in any way that they could. So, I'm running because the community has been there for us, and I really want to give back to the community, and I want to serve you on Arvada City Council. I'm running because Arvada is a great place to live. It's a great community, and we have a lot of work to do. And I want to create more prosperity for all Arvadans and small businesses. I'm running because I believe I have the dedication and the experience to get things done. My priorities will start with focusing on bringing back and building back better after the pandemic, and that starts with our infrastructure. We need to repair our roads. We need to repair our aging water and sewer infrastructure. And we also need to be looking at, as we grow and develop, how do we protect our neighborhoods and our quality of life and make our community safer and have more attainable and affordable housing, and finally, strengthen our resiliency with climate change. On city council, I will use my experience as a teacher, as a scientist, and as a nonprofit recycler to bring people together to help us solve solutions that we are facing and ensure that we come up with a collaborative solution that involves everyone and all voices are heard. I want to work for you, and tonight, I ask for your support and your vote. Thank you.
All right, Randy, thank you. We'll move on to our questions now, and each of you will be given the opportunity to respond to our questions. Randy, you get the first question, and that question is, if elected to the Arvada City Council, what recommendations, if any, would you want to see enacted to address the problems of homelessness in the city of Arvada? And you have two minutes.
Great. Thank you. It's a great question. I've volunteered with Planned, excuse me, with Family Promise, and Family Promise is an organization that works with community churches here in Arvada. And so, I have had the opportunity to talk to a lot of people, the families that come through there. And, you know, for many different reasons, people are homeless, and it could be the cost of finding housing and not being able to afford it. It could be, in some cases, what's happening at home with domestic violence and other situations. And so, I really feel like it's important that we approach homelessness with a very holistic approach and make sure that we are providing the wraparound services that people need to get back on their feet and to find the housing and that they're getting that support that they need. Arvada needs to be a place where everyone can thrive, and so, we have to really look at how we balance our jobs that we're providing and making sure that those jobs are good-paying jobs, that people can get livable wages. We have to look at our transportation system and make sure that everyone has accessible transportation and can get around, and then also looking at housing and making sure that people have options and are able to find places that they can live here in Arvada and work and thrive.
Randy, thank you very much. Chelsea, same question to you. I'll repeat it. If elected to the Arvada City Council, what recommendations, if any, would you want to see enacted to address the problem of homelessness in the city of Arvada? Two minutes, please.
Thank you. I'm learning so much about all of the ins and outs of things that city council actually does for the city. What I do know is that there are lots of nonprofit organizations, churches, and other already existing programs that are better equipped to deal with the homeless population, to get them the support and the services that they need, and they do a better job than I think anything that city council could do. I do also know that as a mom, I'm very concerned when I'm walking down a trail and I see homeless people camped out behind people's backyards. I don't think it's a safe situation for kids, and I don't think it's a safe situation for those people who need help. So, I definitely would recommend that we don't allow people to camp out in places where they might be they might jeopardize the safety of our citizens.
All right, Chelsea, thank you. And in our rotation, you will go first with this question. The police department has the responsibility for protecting the public in a variety of situations. When carrying out duties as police officers, what what changes, if any, would you recommend the city of Arvada and the police department make to protect this community as well as protect the police? Two minutes.
It's a really sad thing to know that our police force is currently down over 20 police officers over the past 18 months. We're not functioning as a city with a fully-staffed police force. Of course, we're seeing a rise in crime. My first priority would be to make sure that our police force is fully funded and that they are fully trained and equipped and that we can hire the necessary police officers to be in our communities, to be visible in our schools, on the streets, wherever, you know, wherever they feel like they can be.
All right, Chelsea, thank you. Randy, same question for you. I'll repeat it. The police department has a responsibility to protect the public in a variety of situations. When carrying out duties as police officers, what changes, if any, would you recommend the city of Arvada and the police department make to protect the community as well as protect the police? Two minutes.
Great, thank you. We have definitely seen and experienced rising crime in our community, and that's across the whole Denver metro area. And I think that the pandemic and the economic downturn we've seen has been a major cause for that, causing hardship in our community. And I know personally I've experienced this. My neighbor who lives across the street from me, one Saturday morning, came out screaming out of her house because someone was trying to break into her truck that was parked in her driveway. And so I think that, as a community, we really need to come together and, again, take a holistic approach, looking at how we can definitely support our police and make sure that they have the resources they need. But at the same time, we need to be looking at our community and what resources they need, making sure that, you know, our streets are safer by investing in services and housing, infrastructure, and jobs. We know that crimes goes down when everyone has opportunities to thrive. And so I want to make sure we're taking that holistic approach, supporting both our police and our residents at the same time. Everyone should feel safe in our community, and I will work to make sure that that happens.
All right, our next question. And Randy, you will answer first in the rotation. With the passage of Senate Bill 21-256, which gives local jurisdictions more latitude to set their own gun control regulations, what changes would you support to your city's weapons ordinance regarding gun control in the city of Arvada? Twenty, two minutes.
Thank you. I think, you know, the events that happened in Old Town with the shooting of Good Samaritan Johnny Beasley, excuse me, Officer Beasley and Good Samaritan Johnny Hurley really weigh heavy on all of us. And I think that it is really time for we, as a community, to come together and have the conversation. I really feel like we haven't talked about it and talk about what we could do now that the state is allowing us to take action as a community. I certainly don't have the answers, and I'm not going to propose one solution tonight. What I am going to propose is that we have the conversation, that we bring everyone together and talk about it. And I feel like that has not happened yet, and it's time we do that. So I am really open, and I have experience in, at the state level and also at the local level here in Arvada to talking to our residents and talking about how we can come together and really look at what some of our options are in improving gun safety in our community. So I really am open to that and encourage that we can do that.
All right, Randy, thank you. Chelsea, same question to you. I'll repeat it. With the passage of Senate Bill 21-256, which gives local jurisdictions more latitude to set their own gun control regulations, what changes would you support to your city's weapons ordinance regarding gun control regulations in the city of Arvada?
I do not support the city imposing more restrictions on citizens' Second Amendment rights. I would support the city encouraging gun safety education. I don't know what that looks like necessarily, but I would support that.
All right, thank you, Chelsea. And our last question, and you will have first shot at this question, Chelsea. What are your priorities for spending available American Rescue Plan Act dollars, federal dollars, and the proposed infrastructure funds? What are your priorities for spending those dollars?
I hear over and over again from citizens, as I'm encountering them knocking on their doors, that they're unhappy with our infrastructure in Arvada. They don't think our roads are well-maintained. I think maintenance is just a thing that the city has to provide. So I would definitely support using those dollars to make sure that our roads are, that we don't have potholes, that they are current in whatever new technology there is, that our sewers are taken care of. I know there's been a big push to expand. We are currently expanding some of our roads. I would look, you mentioned federal dollars. I think I'm crossing all the different governments. But I know Indiana is a huge concern for Arvada citizens, that it sees a lot of traffic. And it's a state highway, so I don't know how all of that would work together. But definitely, I think Indiana needs to be addressed.
All right, Chelsea, thank you. Randy, same question. What are your priorities for spending available American Rescue Plan Act dollars, federal dollars, and the proposed infrastructure funds as well? What are your priorities for spending those dollars?
Thank you. I definitely agree. Our biggest challenge is our aging and deteriorating infrastructure, including our roads, but also our drinking water and sewer system. Everywhere I go, I drive on our roads, and I see how bad they are. And I have a small pie baking business out of my home that, you know, I drive to deliver pies. And I feel like I hit every single pothole on the road on my way for delivery. And I talk to many residents, and they all have stories about the crumbling curb that's outside their house. And it's really hard to get out of the car and be able, for some that have disabilities, to be able to get out of the car and get into their home because of that failing infrastructure. So that definitely has to be number one, and how we prioritize these funds and spend them. Also, I want to mention that, being part of the Sustainability Committee in here in Arvada, I've had the opportunity to visit the Ralston Water Treatment Facility. And we have a lot of aging equipment there that needs to be replaced. I'm afraid that the 100-year flood we had in 2013 isn't that far off from happening again. And so all that silt and debris is going to clog up those filters again. And I'm worried what our water quality will be like. And finally, we are woefully behind in our compliance with the American Disabilities Act. My husband has a disability from a stroke. He finds it very challenging to get around our community. And because he can't drive and, you know, trying to get to work, just trying to walk to the coffee shop where there's no sidewalk. So we definitely have to be prioritizing our spending on looking at accessibility and also making sure that everyone has access to their transportation needs. And finally, with the rising temperatures, we're going to see more and more problems with our infrastructure, not only with forest fires, but with droughts. And so I really promise to prioritize our stimulus funds and our city resources. And we really have a responsibility to invest in them. Thank you.
Okay, Randy, thank you. Time now for closing statements. And each of you will have one minute for a closing statement. And the League of Women Voters is posing the question, why should the citizens of Arvada vote for you? You have one minute, and Randy, you will speak first. Why should the citizens of Arvada vote for you? One minute, if you don't mind.
So my dad passed away from COVID in December. And I've been reflecting lately on some things that he said to me. And that was when we were, and when I was a kid, we were working in the garage together, doing chores and polishing the car, sweeping the floor. And one of the things he said to me was, "Son, don't start a job unless you're going to finish it. And if you do a job, make sure you do it right." I love our community here in Arvada, and it is like family to me. And as we work on our infrastructure and improving that and helping everyone feel safe and grapple with growth and climate change, I want us to never lose sight of the community we want now and into the future. So through my career as a scientist and a teacher and a nonprofit recycler, I've worked very hard to bring people together to find solutions. And I commit to you today that I will do that for Arvada. And as my dad said, "I will get the job done and do it right for Arvada." Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. And now, Chelsea, if you would, your closing statement, and you have one minute.
I believe that I am the right person for Arvada because I am your neighbor. I'm a concerned, engaged citizen, and I just, I'm just, I could be anybody. That makes me qualified because I care about our community, and I'm ready to step up and make sure that we fulfill our commitments, our requirements as a city council, to provide public safety, to make sure that we're growing in the right way, and to make sure that our infrastructure is taken care of. That's our job as city council.
All right, thank you. The candidates for Arvada City Council District One. Thanks to both of you, Chelsea Kanda and Randy Mormon. Thank you for participating in the forum. Thanks for being part of the public discourse. And thank you both for running.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is the Arvada City Council District Three Candidates Forum, is what I'm trying to say, mistakenly thinking I'm on videotape, but we're not. So we'll just continue. So the candidates for District Three are John Marriott and Susie Schuckman. Now, due to a prior commitment, Susie was unable to be here tonight. But under the League of Women Voters' rules, a delegate from Susie is allowed to read an opening statement. But she will be unable to answer any questions on Susie's behalf. And the delegate speaking on Susie's behalf is Robin Coopernick. And we're live, just so you both know, I had no idea. So anyway, we're live, and there is no going back and fixing it, no do-overs. All right, so we're going to ask you to introduce yourselves and tell us why you want to be a member of the Arvada City Council. You will have two minutes for your opening statements. And John, you will go first, followed by Robin. So John, your opening statement, if you will, please, and you have two minutes.
Well, thank you, Mark. I appreciate that. So I'm a very lucky person. I got to grow up here in Arvada, and I still live here. And I'm raising my family here. I've had great success in life. And as I look back on the foundation for that success, I come back to the place that I grew up had a lot to do with it. I was a beneficiary, growing up, of a very safe community, a community with great parks, recreational facilities, great schools, and great cooperation between different layers of government. Though I didn't know that then, it's very apparent now. We also had a terrific economic climate in Arvada and still do today. And I benefited greatly from all of those things. Because of these things, I've had an incredibly enriched, fulfilled life. And I'm running for city council to make sure that my children, your children, and children who are not even born yet have the same advantages in life that I had. I was first elected to the Arvada City Council in 2013. I was re-elected in 2017. And I'm running for my third and final term here to continue with the work that we started eight years ago. We have many different things in this community that are just absolutely terrific, and I'm very proud of the work we've done. We also have work to do, however. We have crime. We need to deal with our crime problem. We have homelessness problems. We have housing issues. We have construction projects that we must finish. And if you re-elect me, I will put all my effort into taking care of those issues and many more over the next four years. Thank you.
All right, John, thank you. And now, Robin Coopernick will read Susie Schuckman's opening statement. Robin, you also have two minutes.
Thank you. And thank you to the entire team of the League of Women Voters of Jefferson County for hosting tonight's event. My name is Robin Coopernick, and I am here tonight to share with you why I am supporting Susie Schuckman for Arvada City Council District Three. Since Susie made the decision to make Arvada her home, she has been involved since day one. She has supported local community groups, such as the Arvada Gardeners, Community Table, and the Arvada Center. Susie understands the daily highs and lows of our neighbors. Her empathy, solidarity with neighbors, and her ability to build relationships among diverse groups is what I believe will ensure she is the most successful when advocating for Arvadans on council. Susie has served nonprofit organizations as a leader and resource-development professional for over 15 years. She has worked with families experiencing child abuse and neglect, homelessness, food insecurity, and adults with a variety of abilities. Susie has consistently supported organizations that uplift women in all stages of the journey. She has served on several boards and committees for the Colorado Women's Chamber of Commerce. She serves as a community engagement leader for Dress for Success for Colorado. She has been a volunteer with the Colorado Organization for Latina Opportunity and Reproductive Rights. And she currently leads the state's largest intersectional feminist movement as a volunteer in her role as Chair of the Women's March Denver. She has consistently delivered resources for women, children, and families in need of crucial services by bringing individuals, corporate partners, and civic leaders together. This type of proactive leadership that is willing to listen to residents is exactly what we need to ensure the future of Arvada is inclusive, sustainable, and welcoming for all. Thank you.
All right, Robin, thank you. And typically, our candidates have two minutes to respond to questions. But only candidates can answer questions, and I'm sure you understand that. So John, all the questions go to you. And you will have two minutes for each answer. And the first question is, if elected to the Arvada City Council, what recommendations, if any, would you want to see enacted to address the problem of homelessness in the city of Arvada? Two minutes, if you please.
Well, thanks, Mark. I appreciate the question. You know, we're already doing a lot of different things. Homelessness is not an Arvada problem. It's a regional problem. And it demands regional solutions. And we participate greatly with our partners and our neighbors in the region to deal with homeless issues as we can. There is, however, an issue that I believe we can do here in Arvada that we're not currently doing. And I think we have never, ever before looked at the dispensing of homeless services as a use. And I believe that it's a valid use. It's something we should be doing. But I don't know, like most uses, that it's something we should do everywhere. I believe there are appropriate places that we should be dispensing homeless services. And I really would like to spend some time working with our residents, working with our business owners, working with our nonprofits, working with our Chamber of Commerce, to have a conversation about how and where we best dispense homeless services, ultimately leading to, what I believe, is it belongs in our zoning code. It's like many other uses that we have. That's where it belongs. And I think if we were doing homeless services in an excellent fashion in the proper places, we would be in a better place, both for the city, for all of our citizens, as well as the recipients of those services, so that we have predictability, reliability of those things. So that's the one thing I think I would do, as well as continue to collaborate regionally with homeless services.
All right, John, thank you. Your next question. The police department has a responsibility for protecting the public in a variety of situations. When carrying out duties as police officers, what changes, if any, would you recommend the city of Arvada and the police department make to protect the community as well as protect the police?
And so, Mark, good question. Thank you for that one. I believe our police department is top of the heap. We already do almost everything that is in the national narrative around policing. We were one of the first agencies around to go to a community-based policing model, where our police officers spend time in parts of the community where they can get to know the issues and the people in those parts better. We also send coresponders on many of our police calls, something that I think is very valid, very warranted to do. We also, with our police force, require that our officers obtain a four-year college degree. We want people who have a broader education, broad understanding of the way the world works. And then, in exchange for that, we give them absolutely the best training that you can have. We also equip our police the best that they can to put them in the best place to do their jobs. And I think it's evident, when you look at the relationship between our police department and the citizens of Arvada, we have not a broken relationship at all. In fact, we have a very close relationship. I think we see it daily and weekly, that we see an outpouring of support from our community to the police. And I think that's a reflection of the job that our police are doing. The state has imposed a body-worn camera